You have five minutes to start once you finish your introduction.
Okay, my name is Milton Holliday, address is five eleven Perimeter Road, Cordial, Georgia. And I'm here to address the board about consider considering moving the meeting back to the evening so that citizens who may have been involved, voters, so they can express their opinion on the community affairs and their agendas. And uh, I still consider this mode, this meeting as being important, but this meeting is more of a municipal meeting. It's not one where people who vote this board in can speak and express their opinion on their livelihood, their property, and their community affairs. And another thing, we have more than five minutes to go vote for the people who's on this board. It takes more than five minutes to get yourself together being there to go vote this, but when you get here, you just got five minutes to speak. Even in the vote voting polls, they almost a seven o'clock for the citizens to have time to participate in the affairs. Either move the meeting or make a separate meeting so the people can speak their, what they need to say. Cordial people are poor people. Right now, we in forty-nine point six percent poverty. And most people can't afford to miss a day's work or two days' work by coming here in the meeting, get a adjourned from different situations. So I think we need to have our own meeting so we can talk to the people who we vote to represent us. Cordial needs a lot of progress, and as of now, we are still considered the poorest city in the state of Georgia. No matter what the criteria is, we still got that, they got that reputation. If you really want to hear our thoughts, please give us a chance to speak. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Holly, um, entertain any comments? Do you have any further questions, comments that you want us to consider?
Well, I'd like to cons, to take into consideration too, like the census report in Cordial. Two thousand two, the census, uh, was, number was ten thousand eight hundred sixty. Two thousand twenty-three, the census was eight nine hundred, nine thousand eight hundred sixteen. So as it is, Cordial is losing. We are really losing. Progress is behind. We need to do something to make things better for the whole situation.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Holly? So, um, just to clarify, you were saying like this meeting because of the time, it's not really feasible for a lot of people to get to and have kind of figure out and know what's going on with the city?
It's mostly inconvenient.
It's inconvenient.
Because if you miss a day's work with the way, most people live in Cordial, almost live in hand to mouth. You miss a day's work, you're in trouble.
So your suggestion or recommendation is to?
At least return the meeting. Y'all can still have this meeting, which it is, I consider it's important because it brings up the municipal affairs of the town. We need to hear what the people got to say. The people who vote this board in.
I heard you. Any questions for Mr. Holly? Thank you, sir. All right. Good. All right, that was Mr. Holly. Um, speakers for us specifically, agenda item, are there any signed up? All right. There's a signature on the paper.
There's a signature on the paper, but he was due because he didn't, uh, fill out that paper. He didn't have time to fill it out. The request form. Mister, fine, it's on the paper.
So I, as I believe the, the ordinance is, when you show up at the meeting and sign up for agenda item, you fill that paper out. Can I see that paper, City Manager? Thank you.
And they have to fill that, I think, before the meeting begins. Before you call the people to order.
I don't think, this has been a matter we'll consider later, but I don't think, I think we have missed up two ordinances. This is the ordinance for people to speak before, when they have to fill out on Wednesday's at five. That's the ordinance we passed. This language right here is the ordinance we passed for that. That list right there is not the same. You're asking someone to show up at a meeting and, um, also fill out this. And I'm not saying that cannot be the case, but I know specifically because this was the issue that we passed after we had people continually coming up here to speak. And when we had the issue with, uh, a few citizens, we passed some things, but I think we have conflated two different ordinances.
That was what was passed.
Yeah, that's just part of the pass. There's, there's a form they fill out on Wednesday and they have five minutes. Then this is the form they complete when they want to speak on an agenda item and they have three minutes, but they have to complete the form before the meeting.
Okay, after this meeting, please send me that ordinance because I'm pretty sure that that ordinance is not specifically sending out to fill that form out in, before. So, send me that ordinance file. All right. But also, um, we probably need to look at that because that's putting a barrier in front of citizens. The agenda's already approved and the logic goes, they're not asking to be specially placed on the agenda. They're asking to speak on something we have already decided to be put on the agenda. So if they have to fill out a form, um, for that, that's trying to putting barriers in front of them having the right to address their representatives. But nonetheless, we shall proceed on. All right, so now we're moving to department bills and accomplishments. Uh, for us, it's finance. How you doing, Mr. Bruce?
Good morning.
Good.
How are you doing?
Good, good. How you doing?
I'm good. So, uh, we've got the information in your package. Did you line numbers, uh, for utility bill and business license, property tax, and, uh, some numbers on cash there. We've been working out there trying to get, you know, I've been here a year in September. So we've made a lot of progress on the physical aspects as well as the, uh, information in the department. Y'all come see us. Come see what we've been doing. Been busy. But, uh, I really don't have anything other than this. You know, we, under the achievements, you know, I mentioned that. Uh, the fact that we've been, you know, trying to get things in order down there, some bank account information there. And then, uh, we have, we got some new devices for the meter readers. I mean, it really didn't, it was just a change in technology for the most part, but, uh, that's all I've got.
All right, any questions for finance? Finance Director? I got a comment, I shaved.
Yeah, thank you.
You doing okay?
I'm good.
Very good, all right. Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you.
All right. Anything's fire?
Good morning. As always, we want to provide best possible service that are, that we can for the citizens and the visitors of Cordial. Uh, we continue to encourage and expand training for firefighters in, in order to do so. We have several firefighters that are attending firefighter two certification class taught by Chris County Fire. We want to thank them for allowing us some spots in their class to help our guys achieve those, that, that goal. We have several firefighters, uh, we have firefighters, um, in basic training. We got two that's going for their certification class at, uh, Georgia Public Training Center. That's going to start September first and it'll be completed in November, November the tenth. So we wish them good, all of the luck that we can to earn in their certification. Uh, ladder one, our Darley Spartan seventy-five foot ladder trucks in the process of being delivered. Uh, we're excited about that. The new li, the new ladder truck will be an asset to a department and, uh, and to the city. We would, all at the fire department, we'd like to thank the City Manager, uh, Ms. Redding, the City Commissioners for the support in that purchase and with the fire department also like to thank Chief Alagud for his hard work in locating and accomplishing the purchase of ladder one in such a short period of time. Um, we'll be training with the ladder, ladder one. We have a representative coming and we're planning on doing that, uh, August sixteenth, seventeenth and the eighteenth to get to move with a truck and get it in service. Uh, Chief Hurd has allowed us to use his classroom. I like to thank Chief for sharing his, sharing his space with us. The, uh, push-in ceremony for ladder one is planned for Monday, August the twenty-first at eight thirty A.M. At Station One where, where we'll be housed. Uh, plans are underway to construct a pole, uh, pole barn at the Payville Water Tower lo, uh, location in order to house ladder three. We received three bids and have identified a company to build a pole barn. The cost was budgeted for the year, for this year, and the site's finished in and secured. Sheriff Hancock has graciously agreed to us house ladder three behind E nine one one building until the pole barn is completed. Uh, Chief Alagud has, uh, applied for a grant to purchase a set of extrication tools to replace our two thousand and six Hurst extrication set. The pump with that set is not operable and the parts are no longer available. We're currently using a demo set from, uh, Hurst on engine one. The cost of the purchase of that set, of the demo extrication tools, the whole power unit, is nineteen thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Um, Chief has also applied for a grant to receive five life pack, one thousand AEDs, one for each emergency apparatus. The cost of the eight of the five AEDs is twelve thousand three hundred forty dollars. And this is a brand that Chris County EMS uses, so it would be, we will be able to connect, they would be able to connect their devices to our pads in a scene and possibly replace the AED pads for us when we use them on a patient. Um, Chief Alagud wanted also to make an announcement of a penny ceremony for deputy chief position to be scheduled at a, a near, in the near future. Um, we've been working on fire stations to do some improvements. We've had, uh, several upgrades, repairs and painting. And the last thing I have is we, uh, again this year, we're having a summer fest Saturday, August twenty-sixth from ten, ten A.M. till two P.M. And this is in partnership with the Cordial Police Department with Community Relations to be held at the Community Clubhouse. And we encourage everyone who can attend to come out and enjoy it.
Any questions for fire? See you now. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right. Um, housing and urban development. Miss Contral, how you doing this morning?
I'm doing good. How are you, Chairman? House of Commissioners. In my report this morning, our potential goal and accomplishment for the year twenty twenty-three, our CDBG twen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty existing goal, we would like to complete the ground installation of the sewer pumps and the sewer line improvements activity within the McLeod subdivision for the forty-eight structures or households that located there. And our accomplishment is a contract that has properly connected eighteen septic tanks and connected eighteen homes onto the city sewer system. And on our CDBG, our chip program, our home rehabilitation accomplishment is that we have completed two of the three homes and are preparing to start on the third home. No changes within our chip program, other than the two homes that we've completed. And in our Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Committee, uh, we have made our accomplishment there. The goal of the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund has been accomplished, and that is to, uh, the, uh, the committee discussed a partic, particular solution to offer loan applicants prior to applying for a loan such as contracting with the University of Georgia Small Business Center regarding their business consulting services at no cost to Georgia business owners and entrepreneurs. We have completed that. And on our goal for official city map updates, we have done that. All of the last annexations and boundary map changes were reported to the city, reported by the city and the River Valley Regional Commission to the U.S. Census Bureau and required, requested in May of twenty twenty-three. And in our CDBG twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four application, our goal is to consult with River Valley Regional Commission and the grant administrator for assistance, and that's all we have.
Any questions for higher urban development goal and accomplishments? Just got one. Um, Miss Contral, on the, um, economic development relief?
Economic development.
Yes, when you talk about, um, loan applicants and their assistance from, uh, University of Georgia.
Mm-hmm.
Is that to help them in preparation of their paperwork to present, or what exactly will they be?
It will help them, uh, with the paperwork and also to get their, uh, get their, get their income payment out, their, their financial situation. Better set, better, better situated to make a loan application. To help them prior to applying for a loan.
We, we will have someone coming to the area to do that, or?
They will have to go to Albany.
They'll have to go to Albany, okay, they go to Albany.
Yes, sir.
So I understand is basically help them in better financial shape than having to borrow money.
Yes, sir.
Because if that time they have to go to the economic bottom, I mean, I mean, these other financial options are kind of closed off.
Yes.
So it's, what you all are doing is getting them kind of business consulting counseling for free. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That's perfect.
Any further questions for Hollywoods, Urban Development, Miss Contral? Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Chief Carlos, Mr. Woods, how you doing this morning?
Good morning. Well, thank you for letting me be here.
Yes, sir.
Um, yes, in your package, uh, nothing has really changed that much. We still have the same goals. Uh, they, uh, on our goals is, one of them is staying up to date with ICC codes and Georgia amendments. And we accomplished that yesterday. It was a long process. I updated all of my certifications with ICC. Uh, they were, they're good for three years, but we are all up to date with our certifications and licenses. Also, I have a, a state license on, uh, residential like commercial. That's been updated. So we, we're holding to our word on that. And, uh, I did get to put this in the report, uh, and we'll put it in the next report. Cause I was, been out of the zone for a little bit here, but, uh, we are showing a lot of improvement on demolition. Uh, we, I have five demolition permits here and they'll be in the next reports, and it's demolition by owners. So it's really picking up and the people are, are, are doing good and, and trying, really trying. So, but that'll be in the next report. I just, I didn't get it in this one. And that's all I have, sir.
All right. Any questions for Chief Code Officials? Mr. Woods?
Yes, Chairman, I do. Um, Mr. Jack, you were elaborating on certificates and certifications just then.
Yes, sir.
And, um, are all codes officials here at the city, do they all go to training and have the same certifications that you just said?
Uh, no, sir. We, we haven't. In the past few years, we have not allotted money and time for training and hopefully that's going to change in the future, uh, on that. We just didn't. Uh, yesterday, I, I spent most all day long trying to get these, these things renewed. And thank goodness, this was only three years, but in three years, it takes a lot of, you used to get them updated. And, uh, but hopefully that's going to change, uh, Commissioner.
Okay. Finance?
Yes, sir.
Any further question for Code? Mr. Woods, I do have another question. As far as, um, we recently, um, Safe Bill, I believe, kind of going in that direction to have a code person in each, um, each ward or each zone of the entire.
Yes, sir.
Um, how does that impact what yourself do or how will it impact what you, what you do?
Uh.
Cause you, you're most on the inspection side. Is that right?
Yes, sir. As it stands right now, uh, and Ms. Redding can correct me, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, the way it's been, the information I've got is, will, uh, will be put in, rather than me be citywide, I will be in one zone. And, uh, I'll be responsible for my zone and, and you will do, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, each, each officer habits, have their own zone. Instead of me being citywide, I'll be in one zone and another officer will be in another zone. Uh, that's something new to me and it, I don't, I don't, I couldn't tell you a whole lot about it. It's just something that they're working on right now.
If I may add to it, um, as I mentioned at the last meeting, Jack and Lynn have both been involved to, with code enforcement to some extent because they have, I think Lynn's title is Protective Services Assistant and Jack is Chief Code Official Protective Services. Um, and so they have been involved, you know, in code enforcement. The thing, um, or the issue that we have is when there's something going on as far as report of, of violations, we're having to send it to so many individuals because of, um, you know, this person will look at this, this person will look at that. And so with the addition of the one officer from Safe Bill, again, it's assigning a code person to each ward and they're responsible for the ward. Now, Jack's title is Chief Code Official, so he handles inspection as well, but that does not take up forty hours a week. So it allows time for him to, uh, assist with code enforcement like he's already been doing when you all send in complaints. Um, the difference is, again, each person will be assigned a ward. We know some wards are larger than others, and so there will be teamwork and coordination to make sure that we're keeping everything covered. Now, in addition to the training that Jack mentioned, ICC, there's also training through GATES, which is an organization, uh, that handles, uh, training for code enforcement officers. Now, when I came on board last year, I mentioned that to them and I, and I mentioned that, um, um, uh, professional development is very important. And so the option has been on the table to go through this GATES training for code enforcement officers. So in addition to ICC, we have that training as well. And that's something that will be implemented to make sure they start going through the GATES training as well.
Chairman, I got a question. Um, so what I'm concerned about with what we're looking at doing here is Jack and Lynn have been working with builders in this community for a long time. Are they, is inspection still going to be Jack and Lynn over this entirety? No matter where, uh, something's being built? And then like Safe Bill and Louis New and Jack and Lynn would be assigned wards for enforcement?
They will be assigned wards for enforcement. Now, until the other two, this will be, uh, New and, uh, the officer from Safe Bill, until they are trained on how to do inspections, Jack and Lynn will still be doing inspections because that's a critical part to this community as far as them working with builders, you know, in, in development. But again, that, those duties do not take up forty hours a week. And that's why I said there will be teamwork and coordination because right now they have the training in inspection, so they will still be doing that. And then as the other officers are trained in, hopefully, you know, we can, as we said, have succession planning and cross-training in those areas.
So for a while, they'll be doing the inspections citywide?
Yes, they still be handling inspections because right now they have the training in that area.
And, uh, we can't leave out plan reviews.
Get plan reviews?
Yeah, we, we offer plan reviews, uh, ten days and a lot of cities cannot do that. And we try to offer inspections within, if you call, in ten minutes, we can be anywhere in, in the city almost in ten minutes. But you will get that, you will get that inspection in twenty-four hours.
So inspection and enforcement are synonymous terms. They're, they're not different?
They're similar.
I mean, as far as if we're dividing, that's what I'm getting at. We divide codes, it's under each ward.
Yeah, it, code enforcement is for each ward. Right now inspections will still be handled by Jack and Lynn because they have that expertise. And then as the others are trained again, you know, through GATES and ICC, then hopefully, you know, they'll be able to take on some of that.
So what's the potential timeline that we anticipate that each official would be training?
The trainings?
For inspections.
Okay.
That do what Jack and Lynn does.
Well, for inspections, as soon as, you know, we can get them registered for classes, they can start taking that training. Now, some require more time than others. There are some certifications that will require, you know, a year or a little more. Um, but again, you know, cross-training is going to be important as, you know, it is with code enforcement, with them working together on code enforcement.
Safe Bill, the person we're contracting will, are they coming with these, with this knowledge as far as inspections? Or is that more on the enforcement side?
The Safe Bill employees, uh, depending on the officer that is sent, sometimes they have certification and inspections because Safe Bill is a full-service company. So they do inspections, plan reviews, planning zoning, code enforcement, and a host of other things. And, and usually they try to send a person that has already received certification. But again, you know, I specifically asked for code enforcement. But, you know, the person, uh, that they send may already have training in inspection.
So may not necessarily certain. So we can potentially get a Safe Bill person that has no credential or certification in inspection?
Oh, yeah, in inspections.
Cause you, we, what we just asked for was just code enforcement.
Right.
So we may be shorthanded in the inspection, um.
Well, we won't be shorthanded because, I mean, they're doing it now. The only thing is, like I say, it doesn't take forty hours a week for them to do inspections. You know, sometime they get a call, you know, but there is time for them to do code enforcement. Now, what percentage that will be worked out based on, you know, what we have in terms of development? Because we know right now, you know, we have a quick trip, uh, potentially to others. But it depends on the development that is occurring at that time in the community as to the time that they would need to handle inspections versus code enforcement. But when they're not doing those inspections, then there is time for them to do code enforcement. And again, it will be teamwork because even if they all were just code enforcement, there are some wards that are larger than other wards.
Okay, ju, so the question that keep popping in my head, just so I'm aware, and I guess the public as well. When we first sought to, um, do this code enforcement per ward, what purpose was it serving? What problem is it solving?
Well, because it was one of the critical issues that was mentioned for this community with dilapidated housing, uh, complaints that I get not only from residents, but from, you know, the city commission as well. And so that's the issue that we're looking to resolve because you could look at this community and you can tell that code enforcement has not been in place or anything done about it. Otherwise, we wouldn't have all of these houses over the city and, you know, they either need to be brought up to code or condemned.
Okay, so I, I guess what I'm starting with, so we had a, a issue with code enforcement in not having enough people to specifically carry that work out?
We had an issue that there was one person in addition to Jack and Lynn, you know, uh, helping out, I would say, some with code enforcement. helping out, I would say, some with code enforcement.
Where there wasn't sufficient?
It's not sufficient. And it's streamlining the, streamlining the process instead of calling this person, they said, oh, well, um, call this person. So it's streamlining the process where it goes to one person and then it's allocated out to that person for that ward. And again, you know, if Jack or Lynn is busy with inspections or whatever, then we always have, uh, you know, teamwork where we can call on another individual to go and take a look at what's going on. And so right now, when I, we get a complaint, we basically just have people going all over the city.
So you're saying it's better for organization, organization purpose, it's better for streamline organization?
And to make, and to know who is responsible for that ward. So, you know, if it's Ward Three for Jack, then we know who the person, who the person is that is responsible for that ward. And again, if Jack is out doing inspections or whatever, then, you know, the person would say, well, Jack is doing the inspections, we need to have, you know, a person go and look at that. Because again, as I mentioned earlier, some wards are larger than other wards and so it's going to require teamwork anyway. It's just streamlining the process.
I think, um, one of the things is we probably would need to, they were just moving forward. Because I understand our goal, but usually when you have division of work, usually the people who have the most experience end up doing the majority of the work anyway. And I understand we want to break it down to wards, but what I'm concerned about long run, if the new person or somebody have an issue with something, even though Woods would be Ward X, uh, they probably gonna have the share of the work, so I don't think it's gonna solve the problem we're looking to solve over time. Cause you always got that one person or that other person that does way more than what they're supposed to because somebody else just have not stepped up or have the experience the other person had. So I think we definitely, this was something, if we go forward, proven that we need to revisit and see if it's working like we're thinking it's gonna work. And I think the biggest concern is just looking at where, uh, Mr. Woods and Mr. Mercer's down with inspections and kind of touching that piece. Um, and I understand it doesn't take forty hours a week to do inspection, depending on development. And if we get a big development, of course, sure, it's more time. But I do think, um, I don't know if we actually solving a problem that we're too much solved. I'd stop to think it over a little bit more.
And I will say, this has been done in other communities and another community where I, I've worked in, where you do have a code enforcement officer assigned to a ward. Right now, you know, even without, they're still doing code enforcement now even with, um, when things are called in, even with doing the inspections. But also, um, without just, and, and, and again, we're getting into person-ness. I don't wanna just put things out there in the public. But I do know for a fact that there are, there is time for them to assist with code enforcement. I do know that for a fact. And again, you know, you're down the road, uh, you know, it could be evaluated. But, uh, the person come in with, uh, for code enforcement for Safeville, they won't have to be, uh, trained on, you know, code enforcement because it's something that they're already, they already have, uh, you know, experience.
Sure. All right, um, any other companies question about codes, code enforcement slash inspections? Thank you, I appreciate what you do. All right, next is Personnel.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. You have my report in your packet, just a couple of items I'm gonna hit on quickly. Um, one of the biggest things we have going on right now is the, uh, classification and compensation study. On August the first, uh, department heads had a meeting with Representative Condrin Associates. Uh, later that afternoon, uh, the employees and employee representatives also had the opportunity to sit down and, uh, talk with Mr. Reese of, of Condrin. We've since then, uh, supplied information to them regarding payroll, organizational charts, uh, position summaries, longevity reports. Right now, job assessments are in employees' hands. Every employee has one, uh, to fill out for their position. Those are due yet tomorrow, uh, for a review and then a final submittal to Condrin that's coming Friday on the eighteenth. And we are in the process also of setting up interviews with randomly selected employees. Those interviews will be held on September the eighteenth and nineteenth. Uh, so that, that process is well underway. Uh, the other item, uh, to discuss, uh, you're already familiar with it. One is which discussed here, uh, just a moment ago, uh, about the, uh, the Code Enforcement Supervisor Position. We're currently accepting applications for that, which is a combination of state certification manager through the police department. And you're already aware of the promotion in the fire department to, uh, where we promoted Inspector Bullington to now Deputy Chief and, uh, along those lines. We're also accepting, continuing to accept the marketing and social media manager applications and community advancement manager positions. Uh, we've got several, uh, good-looking applications there and anticipate, uh, interviews and filling that position shortly. And that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Any question for Personnel? I do have one question. You said you all will be conducting randomly selected interviews, are employees?
Yes, sir.
Uh, purpose?
Uh, to get a, right now, they're, they're completing a written assessment of their job. This is the opportunity to sit down and answer any questions Condrin may have. And just to, to, some people may not be, uh, able to articulate in writing exactly what they do. It's hard to describe what you did. Uh, so this is to get a better understanding of the positions.
So is the ultimate purpose for them to get a better understanding of their job or for the city and leadership? Or the department has to get a better understanding of what they do or what they think they do?
Dually, um, it's primarily gonna assist Condrin, but it's also gonna assist the department heads and supervisors in understanding better what the employees do.
And the overall goal would be to, to what?
Um, we're hoping that, um, one is to properly compensate the employees for what they do, to develop better job descriptions, to describe, uh, what they're gonna be doing. And to assist us in, uh, developing our future job descriptions and responsibilities for any positions we may have coming in next year or so.
I love that, that's good. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. That's good work. All right, um, municipal court has no report. So the point of, um, third Tuesday is its goals and accomplishments. I've been to the municipal court and of course, nobody likes showing up to court. Uh, everybody do think there are some goals and accomplishments that our court should actually try to reach. Um, I don't think no department shouldn't have goals or accomplishment, even if that is to improve efficiency or, um, the court experience of people who actually show up to court. Cause I know there was a lot of complaints about our court. And again, taking a reason, um, of course, no one's gonna be happy without the show of the court and maybe possibly pay a fine. But at the same time, it's disappointing that our court usually on, what I noticed the pattern is, normally do not have goals and accomplishments on third Tuesdays. So if that could be addressed, I think it would be helpful for the judge and whoever else to sit in, um, um, Ms. Walker to sit down and at least think about some things they want to improve as far as the court goes. All right, next Police.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, many of our goals are set at the beginning of the year, so I wanted to provide a update or kind of a status to see where we are or let everybody know where we are as far as achieving those. First goal that was set was our department plans to increase the morale and manpower within the department. Um, we currently are filled with our patrol positions and, uh, we're looking to fill vacant supervisory positions from within. So that would address some of the manpower as well as the morale. We will continue community policing through events and public contacts. Uh, as stated earlier, we have the Cordial Summer Fest. This will be the second annual. Uh, it's on Saturday, August twenty-sixth from ten to two. Um, my staff has worked very hard on planning this event and making it bigger than it was last year. That was the plan with this whole thing when we originally came up with it was we wanted it to be bigger and bigger each year to make it more community oriented. And, uh, this year, we have done so. Um, so I would appreciate it if you'd look on our Facebook and like and share our posts in relation to that. Uh, I would like to have a really good turnout. Some of the new, uh, things that we'll be having this year is, uh, we'll actually have a car show. So we have several, uh, different car enthusiasts coming and bringing their vehicles and we'll have judging and everything with the cars. We'll also have vendors as well as food trucks. And that's in addition to the games and, uh, dunking booth and everything else that we had last year. So again, we would, uh, appreciate it if you came out and, uh, enjoyed in the festivities. Um, some of our training was delayed due to manpower. Brings us to the next one. Our department will start, uh, excuse me, I got sidetracked here. We're focused on increasing the quality of our training. Uh, that was another goal. Again, some of our, um, training was delayed due to manpower. Those manpower issues have been addressed. So we have now increased, um, and resumed our training and sending officers to even off-site training. But we're also working on an in-house, uh, training schedule to where we can teach, uh, some of our officers some specific things that are needed to address within, uh, and teach them here. Uh, the last one is our department will start the process of becoming state certified. As also previously stated, uh, we posted a position, it was a dual position for state certification manager and codes. Um, that closed on August eleventh and we'll be conducting those interviews very soon, hopefully, uh, to fill that position and get us moving towards that, uh, that goal. Some of our accomplishments is we still have two cadets in the police academy. Um, I'd like to congratulate them on passing a very vital or hurdle in, when it comes to training. They passed their firearms. Uh, the next big hurdle is EVOC, which is driver training. So we're looking forward to them passing that and getting, um, back to us. We also, uh, last Thursday, held assessments for our vacant corporal positions. Uh, those assessments carried over until yesterday. Um, so today, I'm pleased to announce the promotion of three officers, Officer Hope Sanders, Austin Wells, and Joshua Stubbs. They are all from within and, uh, they will be promoted to the rank of corporal. Um, so we're very proud of them. That's all I have.
Any questions for Police? I do have a question concerning the Summer Fest. If, where is the purpose of Summer Fest?
Well, one of the, the simplest way to answer that is to engage with the community. We don't want the community to believe that we're an oppressive force and, and that we are, you know, warding over them and, and trying to be this oppressive force. We're people and we enjoy and love this community and we want to interact with the community on a different, uh, level. So it's in community engagement. When I got put in this position and hired for this position, one of the things I stood on was engaging with the community. This is one of many ways that we have done that. Last year was a success and this year we're looking forward to it too.
So when you say success, what, what metrics or what, by what standards do you consider that?
To be quite honest with you, if one person showed up, I look at it as a success.
One person?
But more than one person showed up, I would love if that commissioners would all show up. Um, but I look at anything or any advancement, any engagement with the community as a success. So I don't necessarily look at numbers.
Uh, hold on, no.
Oh.
All right, uh, thank you. And then if you, the city manager, if you could, give me the budget for Summer Fest? Um, and I'm asking a lot of purpose questions because apparently over the last couple of months, the city doesn't have particular money to do certain things. But we do a lot of things and if it's not purpose-driven or it's not to enhance each department goal or what they should be doing, I think we need to take a real look at purpose-driven activities that this city does. Um, and if you cannot put a purpose on it and, and, and have a reason to enhance or improve their lives or the jobs, then I don't think we should be doing it other than what's federally and state mandated to do. Of course, there are some things that you're, you just have to do. Um, government already gets a rep for not doing things too well. In my time here, um, it's been pretty much, um, fair and well with that statement. So I'm gonna ask, it's not personal, I'm gonna ask every, my point from this point forward be what's the purpose? And we need to have a purpose for spending length. Uh, because when there's things that clearly lay out a purpose and I think that the city should be doing, the thing is, we don't have money, we don't have money. Well, I have purpose for everything, I'm asking for a penny for. And I just don't wanna kind of do things just to be doing it. That sets for bad, bad outcomes.
Can I answer to that?
Yes, sir.
As far as the purpose, I think I've clearly expressed the purpose of Summer Fest is to engage with the community. As far as the funding goes, most of the funding is coming from donations. So as far as actual budgeting from city budgets, that, there's nothing coming from that. Very few, uh, money being allocated towards Summer Fest is coming from city budgeted money.
Well, it's my job to know it.
And that's why I'm informing you.
Right, right, yeah, but-
Because it comes from donations.
Right, but I'm, I'm pretty sure some comes from the city as well and I need to know what that amount is.
I can give you an exact, but it's less than a thousand dollars.
I want exact.
I'll give you an exact, yes. Oh, yeah, yes, that's fine.
So we'll keep things proper, um, any communication, um, so.
That's right.
For the city manager, city manager, yes.
Uh, the only thing I wanted to add is Summer Fest is, um, I guess Cordial's, the National Night Out. A lot of police departments across the state have, they have National Night Out. And what it is, is a community engagement event. Um, I, I, last year I asked about National Night Out and I think there are some funds and you have to get their literature and some other things. And, and Cordial has held a National Night Out before. Um, but, uh, this is parallel to what most communities call National Night Out, so I just wanted to make that.
Thank you, I'm, I'm clear on that. I think you're confusing the reason we do something with the purpose. The chief answered the purpose, what I was looking for. To me, you're confusing because that's why we're doing it.
I just wanted, I, I just wanted to make that statement before he made that.
I get you, but what I'm saying, the chief, the purpose is what I was looking for, that's the reason. I'm looking for the purpose behind it, which our group community engagement is important. So I appreciate your answer, but I didn't need the reason we're doing it. Uh, I appreciate you. Any other things else for Police?
Yes, Chairman, I would. I appreciate you going out into the community, best I remember. I contributed to this last year and this really steps on the nerve with me because several years ago, we didn't do shop with a cop. So I funded shop with a cop. And when I funded that, it was fine. Those special needs children got to go shop with those teachers and everything. I never asked for nothing. But when you involve yourself with the community, you're doing a great job. I will always contribute to you, so feel free to stop by.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Can I be giving you something as well?
Thank you.
Thank you, well, since we have it out there, that goes out to the whole community and hopefully more men will come in.
Yes.
Good, but that's part of asking what's the purpose in answering those questions because some citizens may not have known that.
Sure.
Now with the media here.
Sure, and that's why.
So.
The community's been very gracious and really have stepped up.
Right.
And I can tell you that, I, I will get the city manager an exact count, but I can tell you that the majority of this last year and even more so this year has been funded through donations.
Good, good, we're good, thank you. All right, Public Works, Mr. Thorfroyd, how are you doing today? Good, good, pretty well.
Since most of the current goals and accomplishments involve a guest, I'm asking you to give a report today.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tina.
Um, I'm doing good. Hope you are as well. Um, what, the first thing that we have is our goal two, um, and it's an update of a previous goal, which is our cathodic protection survey. Cathodic protection surveys have to be performed annually. Um, we completed our survey at the end of July, first week of August. And currently, we are expecting to be required to do some additional testing, some casing resistance testing, some of the numbers on our casings that, uh, encase our pipeline that go under railroads are coming back with some, uh, current on those. Um, so we're trying, we, we're gonna, at this point, I don't have- Um, so we're trying, we, we're gonna, at this point, I don't have the report. It should be in by the end of the month, first of next month. Um, and we'll know a little bit more about what we're faced with, but what we've got is we have current on our casing. If it is stealing current from our pipe, it could potentially damage our pipe. So we're gonna have to, to do some testing to determine what the cause of that is and do some remediation there, but I'll know more about that once the report comes in. Uh, for new goals, we have our leak survey that is expected to start around September the eleventh. It is a walking leak survey, we'll walk the entire hundred and twenty-three miles, we'll visit every service in the city to evaluate any below ground and above ground leaks. So we'll begin that in September, it'll take about sixty days, weather permitting, for us to get that accomplished. And that's all I have.
Alright, any questions for public works, specifically Ms. Tina?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve. Alright, U C N T, Ms. Debbie?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, we collected our twelfth sample for heptic chlorine cyanide at the wastewater treatment plant and it came back non-detected. So, we are hoping, I sent all those results in for the last year into EPD as requested, the entire reports, not just the analysis. And hopefully they will make a decision shortly that they'll take that out of our permit. And that will save us about two hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. Uh, we also sampled Twenty-Fourth Avenue well and Second Street well for the PFAS and lithium and there's several other things and that's a real touchy, you have to be very careful collecting those samples. Um, I don't look for anything to come back detected, but we'll have to wait for that report to see and we'll have to sample again in December. Um, we had to postpone the lead and copper sampling program just a little bit because of the weather and we had so much else going on in Ju- July that we'll be sending out the letters in the next couple of weeks and hopefully pick up the samples the week after later date. We wanted to get everybody that's going to school and everybody that's, you know, got changes to get settled in before we throw this sample on. And that's about it. If y'all have any questions?
Any question for U C N T? Thank you, Ms. Debbie.
Thank y'all.
Alright, at this time, we'll move into our agenda items, alright? Um, the first agenda item is a much discussed thing, Summer Fest. Um, considering approval of that permit for Cordial Summer Fest, do we have a motion for agenda item number one?
So, move.
So it's been moved, moved, did we have a second? Alright, so we have, um, to consider and approve, alright? We shall proceed to discussion, any discussion on Summer Fest? Saying none, we shall proceed to vote, alright? Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote on agenda item number one?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Alright, agenda items approved, motion carries. Alright, considering approval of event permit, Family Music Fest, Cordial Main Street. Alright, uh, do we have a motion for agenda item number two? We've probably moved a second, that we consider an approved Family Music Fest. Alright, and, uh, we should move into discussion, any discussion on agenda item number two?
I see it's, alright, we will also have one alcohol truck. Can you say we'll have alcohol truck?
That is, uh, the vendors as for, as for the music festival, uh, one would be an alcohol truck and, uh, the, with the proof of the second ordinance, remember those signed cups that they will have for each event? Uh, and so at this event, they will have an alcohol truck that will have those specialty cups that are tied to the music festival event.
So, basically this is contingent that the ordinance will pass?
It's already passed, the second reading was.
Already passed?
Yes, the entertainment district and all that, uh, the second reading was passed at the last reading.
Okay.
Just one other question, with, with the setup of this particular, um, venue, uh, will we take note that the truck will be, I guess if there're gonna be other food trucks, that, that truck will be somewhat separated from the other areas?
I'm not sure how the, normally the trucks is right there together, the food trucks has, they will have a designated area, you know, at the festival so that you won't have to go, you know, all over, but I can follow up with Monica on the setup for that.
Okay. Alright, any further discussion? Saying none, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rainey, how do you vote on agenda item number two?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion carries, item approved. Alright, agenda item number three, consider and approve board reappointments, Cordial Housing Authority Board, uh, Mr. Lamb, Barnes and Ms. Maddie. Alright, do we have a motion to, uh, consider and approve?
Second.
It's been properly moved, that we consider and approve board appointments, uh, reappointments, uh, specifically, alright, any discussion? Saying none, I do have questions for the Housing Authority Director, I see you in the audience. So, uh, when you ask for board members to be appointed, uh, where do you kind of look for, what qualities do you look for the?
Well, there are certain things that HUD likes to have, they like for us to have different kinds of professionals represented as well as residents. Um, we look for, um, banking, uh, there've been times when we've had an attorney on the board, we have people who work with social services agencies that, um, have experience in dealing with the issues that low income people face. Finance, there's a variety of things. We can't get it all on one board, but we try to do the best that we can.
So, most, kind of multi-disciplinarity team, so to speak, okay?
And, and for me, to have go-to people who have expertise in, in different fields, you know?
Right, right, right. And currently, do your board have a diversity of professions?
We do.
Okay.
There are not enough members to have one of everything we need, but yes, we have a pretty good representation.
Right. And do you consider the board to have a good representation, a cross-representation of the community?
Yes.
And the last thing, how do, does the board seek to improve the lives of, of the residents in the housing department?
Well, uh, we work on improving our infrastructure, we have just completed, well, we're about to complete renovation of, um, twelve one-bedroom apartments at Sunset Homes, which will have an addition to them, um, and they will have washer and dryer connections, which they have not had, they will have central heat and air, which they have not had, and we're trying to gradually convert those. Um, we have just signed a contract to re-ruth, some people call it Drayton, its official name is C.C. Sherer, and that should start in September. Um, and so infrastructure is, is one issue. Uh, we, we stay attuned to HUD, who's ever-changing our regulations. Um, we support training for our staff to keep up with that and there's some big changes coming down the pipe that we're trying to get ready for with our policies. Let's see, we try to, we promote community involvement, we have a resident services coordinator who works with our residents to make them aware of opportunities such as Summer Fest and things like that, to make sure that they participate in what is available. Um, we work with Southwest Georgia United, they have, um, people who can do trainings on housing. Truck, the, our ultimate goal would be for people to not stay in public housing forever, but to move up and learn how to be prepared to maybe own their own home one day. We work with County Extension, we have a representative from County Extension. Uh, we try to get children to take part in four H, we.
Mr. West?
Send children to four H camps.
Is that Mr. West?
Yeah. Does that give you a perspective?
Yeah, um, so, uh, I, I'm just curious because, um, I grew up in two projects, Twenty-Fourth Project, which is called Sunset, and also Drayton. And one thing that we had were, uh, program, uh, we worked with the Recreation Center, um, to push that, but we also had playgrounds. We had things to, um, excite the minds of kids, um, to also be exposed to opportunities outside of their residence. And so I'm always, from that perspective, looking into things like that, the infrastructure, training, community involvement is good. But I was wondering, 'cause each, I think, area, each housing division has a community center, is that correct? I believe most of, and are they utilized throughout the year or, um, 'cause I, I remember most of them being closed for?
During COVID, they were closed.
Are they still closed?
Back up and things are beginning to happen, yes.
Could, do you think you often work on, maybe getting volunteers to come in and do certain kind of programming like ARPS? I know Mr.
With what?
ARPS and different things at Community House, I think that's where people, um, would like to see it kind of be opened back up and utilized for community good.
Um, they can make an application to use the building, they have to present what their program is, there's a process for that and policies. And so we, anybody who's interested in that can, um, submit their proposal and we'll look at it and see.
When you say look at, so that's approval process?
Well, uh, yes, there is.
Please send me through my email, you should have my email from when we talked earlier, what the approval process is.
Will do.
So I can inform the public. Alright, any further discussion on agenda item number three? Saying none, we shall proceed to vote, alright, um, Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote on the?
Yes.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, Mr. Barnes and Ms. Maddie are approved, reappointed. Alright, agenda item number four, considering approval of the request for items listed for the finance apartment B, declare surplus. Alright, do we have a motion for agenda item number four?
So.
We have, um, probably moved the second to consider and approve, uh, agenda item number four. Um, we shall move into discussion, any discussion on agenda item number four? Saying none, we shall proceed to vote, alright, Commissioner Owens, how do you vote on agenda item four?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright, consider first reading of our ordinance, amend the city code of, um, City of Cordial to move code for enforcement, implementation and enforcement for Community Development Department to the Police Department, repent all of the ordinance in conflict with the name. Do we have a motion to consider agenda item number, um, five? Alright, I think the motion died for lack of second, uh, so we should move on, alright? Uh, agenda item number six, considering approval of the second reading of our ordinance, designate certain public streets in the City of Cordial uh, for combined use of motorized carts, I think we discussed this earlier, alright? Do we have a motion to consider and approve agenda item number six?
So, move.
It's been properly moved a second, that we consider and approve the second reading for, um, using carts, alright? Um, we should proceed to, um, discussion, alright, any discussion on this item? Um, I only, I mean, we have moved forward, designate the certain streets, I think that was all up last time, uh, attorney, have we?
It's right there.
Okay.
Streets, I think the chief heard and suggested counts.
Okay.
Then only the police use, uh, do you have any, uh, criteria?
And could you inform the public regarding criteria, so they have here, here in the meeting, so if some criteria that are used, they should have no, um, um, issues, sort of criteria is?
Right, state routes, uh, no county routes, uh, I could excuse, state routes or federal routes and twenty-five miles an hour or less.
Further discussion on agenda item number six? Saying none, we shall proceed to vote, alright, Commissioner Owens, how do you vote on agenda item number six?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, alright? Agenda item number seven, discussion of term limits, the three, uh, terms for elected officials. Um, I provide background, I believe is, um, important. I've looked at some city charters and a few city addresses where which elected officials after their third term, uh, some have after two terms and others four, um, really, uh, step aside and let other people have the opportunity to represent. Uh, I do believe government has become so static because people sit in seats forever and they lose, because they, they take the vote for granted and they lose touch with the people who are asking them to do things or, uh, who they really represent and the meaning of their representation. So, um, I've been in consultation with some city members, other cities, um, about the decision, why they decided to have term limits and use, that's the reason that's been pushed even on the national level to do the same thing. Uh, so that's the reason I put this on the agenda, because I believe we should serve in the capacity and not pass the point of us just sitting in seats and collecting checks. Uh, do we have a motion for agenda item number seven to discuss? Alright, seeing none, we should move on to agenda item number eight. Um, agenda item number eight, discuss creating neighborhood planning units. Uh, so, um, background, I asked for this to be put on the agenda, the background is NPUs, uh, neighborhood planning units have been seen as effective tools for citizens and other civil organizations to plan, uh, certain sectors of the city or the area. They've been shown to be very effective, I think the City of Cordial could actually benefit from neighborhood planning units if we are to set up, um, that type of, um, arrangement with the city to empower neighborhoods and improve their own neighborhoods and let them lead, it is based in empowerment um, of the people who are actually impacted by their neighborhoods and with the crime we have, uh, going on and dilapidation and um, the blight of some of our communities, I think it would be a good idea to involve the people who is actually directly affected every day by going, walking outside their doors and seeing the condition of their neighborhood in the city would act as, um, organizing factor and also empowerment. Helping, um, plan out and equipping them with tools to better understand how to improve their neighborhoods. So that's why I asked for that to be put on the agenda. Uh, do we have a motion to discuss agenda item number eight?
So, move.
Second.
It's been properly moved a second that we discuss NPUs, neighborhood planning units, alright, any discussion?
When, when you talk about the background of that, would that would deal with crime, is the overall look of the communities, is that, is that what we, the, the follow-up for that? And then once they're set up, if they're set up, what would be the, um, how would, I guess, uh, where would we go from there, like they, they, these issues are taken, so who would we present them to? Do they come back to us in this setting or how do we manage?
So, from what I've seen and what I, my research I've done and I went on a little bit, is pretty much, it's a good time to bring it up because we're hiring a community advancement manager and that's something that can plug into, uh, what they're doing, especially if they're gonna be dealing with other issues of that magnitude. Uh, I wouldn't say it directly deals with crime, but when you have someone or a group of people in their neighborhood committed to improve it, whether it's crime or beautification, I think, uh, it sends a message and kind of second morale a little bit higher for that whole area, because right now, us doing nothing, um, or a little bit of nothing, I wouldn't necessarily say nothing, um, is definitely not the answer. Because I know that when you grow up in a community, um, people that know the person next door respect them a whole lot more than even sometimes people that's not living in the community. So I think it's community after work, people grow their sleeve and invest and we're putting them to community advancement managers to actually oversee and plan it out and make it a thing in Cordial the way they see fit. It doesn't have to be the exact same. I'm big into the people doing the job, having the most say. Uh, so I, as I always tell you all, I just lay planning out and to find the details, I like for the people actually in charge to have the largest input into what they actually practically look like on the ground running.
So based on what our expectations are for the community development manager, that could be, this could be something that could be added as a? So based on what our expectations are for the community development manager, that could be, this could be something that could be added as a, a duty or assignment for that person?
To organize, to manage, yes.
Okay, my question is for the organizer. I, I mean, do you, when you ask me, the people in the community, people, that's my community form is out, I'm the lead person in my community. I come outside and I see something in my neighborhood that I don't like, a pile of trash, it's a C and D, um, that they put out. I mean, do I go and clean it up, I mean, as the leader, I mean, what, what?
No, so, NPUs are much bigger than just trash cleanup. They, their whole job is to kind of section off, we have wards, but we're talking a little bit more, um, smaller than wards. So for instance, you have over there in your area where you live, so sectioning out, that would be a neighborhood, the NPU. Then maybe when you cross, um, tenth or what have you, that would be a different one. So there are sections and blocks within each ward or district, as they call it in other places. But you also work with nonprofits, other civil organizations for the whole improvement. They can adopt beautification, trash cleanup, but they would know specifically what their needs are. If, in some neighborhoods, some cities involve economic development, um, some involve beautification, some type of crime. It, it just depends on what they consider their more urgent needs are. And so that'd be left up, that's in essence why I call neighborhood planning units, they plan for the success of their own neighborhoods and it's section units. And, and things, so I, you know, I just think it'll be an investment, because I also think people, certain people don't feel empowered and don't know how to plan, but also part of the city adopted, certain training should become available to them as well. Uh, we have two schools here, South Georgia Tech and Albany State, that also can roll up their sleeves and help the city in assists with hosting workshops and planning with universities coming to teach about community development. Uh, the thing can be as grand and big as we want it to be, can be as small as we need it to be. But I think we ought to at least start in discussion of how do we not only look at Cordill as a whole, but look at the neighborhoods that make the City of Cordill and improve them.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Have you been to NSD, has ever been this, this program already?
Yeah, I'm actually involved with the City of Atlanta's NPU projects, so, yes, it's couple of cities that have it. And it, it's really good, and they're very much so, of course, they work with different, I mean, they, they come to the, uh, the meetings and they're pretty much, um, for the most part, they're active in the government, at the neighborhood, community, if the unit needs something, they advocate pretty hard for it, um, so it's, we are the representation of each ward, but each of those units kind of look at either deeper than districts or ward and say, yeah, I hear what they need, but I'm saying for my neighborhood, my unit, this what we need, this is what we're petition or asking the, the government body for. And that, I, I encourage you all to do your research on them and see how effective they're being in, in certain other places. Um, I just think it's perfect timing to pair with the community advancement manager. Based on how I initially envisioned the community advancement manager working, when I created the position, this is something that I think, um, would work very well with them, whoever the person may be.
I'm, I'm in favor of doing some more research, uh, I know in my community, in, in, in my own neighborhood, for, for an example, I, uh, when you talk about beautification, the, uh, at, at my home, there was no grass, there was spots where there was dirt spots where it should have been grass. And, um, I purchased grass, I had a truck pull up and take panels of grass off and as I made saw it in my yard, my neighbor came out and he questioned me about what the grass cost, you know, I went to saw it costing, asked was I gonna need some more? And eventually, the truck pulled up and was taking grass off at four residents there in my neighborhood. And so, you know, uh, that was my program, but, uh, that was want somebody to take the lead and everybody else following suit, so, um, I, I know it can work, I, I'll just do that, I know when, when one is doing something to make something better, somebody else said, I know it can work, that's from, from that. So, but I would like to do, as you said, uh, my own research to, uh, to see how, how, how deep these things are going, how involved would the city be and how much time would it take for this, this, uh, this new position that, uh, that would have a little more? For, I, I for sure don't wanna put too much of a workload on anybody when we're talking about, you know, four wards one thing, when you're talking about how many different neighborhoods that are in a ward, I mean, it could, just sitting here thinking, it could be a lot. You know, so I would, I would love to do some more, some research to see exactly to, to what does.
Nah, I definitely think just the grass scenario that you mentioned earlier is the absolute foundation of how it can work, is multiplying effort. The thing about, I always say, what we do, and I may just come to, what we can do with our hands here doesn't compare to what we can do with our voice vote and what we can improve on the city board. Just like your example, just think about if your effort, the grass scenario, you're able to multiply on a systematic level within the city, how much the city can accomplish, and that's the whole goal, that's the whole goal, to take what we can do in our individual capacity and multiply to improve the whole city. Um, so I, that's what you said is exactly the point, and I believe would be the advantage of NPUs in the City of Cordill. Any further discussion on agenda item number eight? Alright, seeing now, alright, we shall, uh, proceed to agenda item number nine. Uh, discussion, decreasing per diem to ninety dollars for travel, alright. Uh, background, I placed, uh, going back to ninety dollars for travel, because after increasing it to, I believe, one twenty-five, I believe, um, in listening to us talk about how much money, uh, that the city needs and how we may have to go into our reserves for some things, I think any little, little amount of money that we can save the city would help. When I looked at the budget, as far as what we get paid, uh, up here, that's about seventy thousand dollars a year. But then when I looked at all travel, our expenses, it's about three to four hundred thousand dollars. And I know part of that's training, part of that traveling, but I believe we can also, that we're asking some things to be cut, us as elected officials can also cut and not, um, ask for more, and go back to the ninety dollars per diem, which I think is sufficient, uh, for our meals when we travel, ninety dollars per day. And it's about doing the same thing we asked the employees to do, uh, they don't get one-third of that when they travel. Um, so I believe we can help out a little bit and keep a little bit more money in, in our budget by also going back to ninety dollars per diem. Alright, so with the background given, do we have a motion to, um, discuss agenda item number nine?
Some move.
It's been properly moved to the second, that we discuss, uh, agenda, uh, item number nine, alright, any discussion?
Yes, when you say, I want you to be clear about the cameras rolling, when you say we make seventy thousand dollars a year, that's, that's, you know, that's the entire board, that you're speaking of, there's no, there's, there's no one person sitting on this board, on this commission that's making seventy thousand dollars a year, I mean, the purpose is about that. Our pay is actually less than twelve thousand dollars a year, okay, I want to put that out there. And when it comes to the ninety dollars per diem, um, from, from ninety, from ninety to one twenty-five, one twenty-five to ninety, really don't make any, that's, you know, uh, most of the places we go to, most of the places we go to, they got available, I do, um, they, that, that will, that will see to it, that we eat, you know, so. They, 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 if, if, if for twenty-five, thirty dollars, thirty-five dollars, I'm putting the city on a better situation, you know, and do it.
I, I, I wanna be clear, as I told you several minutes, when I speak, I speak very technically, I've been trained to speak very technically with my profession. So when I say we, we as inclusive of multiple people, when I say we make seventy dollars, that's what I meant, I ain't say I make seventy, I ain't say Commissioner Reeves make seventy dollars. So I don't think any elaboration was needed to that point.
There are some people who will hear that and assume that, you know, the training you've had, everybody hasn't had that training. So there are some people that will hear that and assume that we all make seventy thousand dollars, so that's why I want to say that.
Well, that's why they go up and write up requests. Any further discussion on agenda item number nine? Seeing now, alright, um, so it's up for a discussion, the commissioners can make a motion at any time to bring our per diem back to nine dollars for travel. Uh, so commissioners, would that be a motion at this time to reduce our per diem back to nine dollars a hour, which it was before?
Some move.
Well, you have to make a motion.
I can't make a motion that we reduce our, um, per diem back to ninety dollars for travel.
Any second to Commissioner Owens' motion?
Okay.
Being now, uh, we shall proceed to the city manager's report, uh, city manager.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
City manager's report for August fifteenth, um, as was previously approved, there was a moratorium, um, or is a moratorium on manufactured homes in the city. And so I met with community development and codes to discuss, uh, some items for the city commission to consider. Um, item one is limiting manufactured homes to manufactured home parks and area, areas designated for manufactured homes. The parks or manufactured home parks are rights located in block one fifty-two seventeenth avenue and ninth street, Rainbow Drive and the mobile home park located between Joe Wright Drive and thirteenth street, uh, considered Martin Luther King. Other areas designated for manufactured homes are McLeod subdivision, Dragnet Estates, and South Pointe Estates. Number two, manufactured homes will be required to have an asphalt or concrete driveway. Number three, any developer, individual seeking to develop in areas of manufactured home park would be required to have no less than five acres and receive approval from the city commission. Uh, manufactured homes will be removed from the R four and R, uh, dash seven point five zoning, as these zonings are previously mentioned, applied to most of the west side of Cordill. And then allow manufactured homes currently in the city and not located in one of the designated areas to be replaced for one of the following reasons, the home is destroyed by fire or to replace, uh, a manufactured home with a new manufactured home. So, uh, at the meeting with community development and codes, those are some items we wanted to bring to the city commission for consideration.
Alright, we're gonna pause here, any discussion about any of those items, commissioners, it's a lengthy one.
I hear you when you say mobile home being replaced by one that was destroyed by fire, right?
Right.
What about placing a mobile home, where a mobile home, why set?
That's in here, replace a, a, a new, uh, it says, allow manufactured homes currently in the city and not located in one of the designated areas, with the, the areas in number one, to be replaced for one of the following reasons, uh, manufactured home destroyed by fire and to replace a manufactured home with a new one. So if they, you know, want to replace with a new one, they will be able to do that.
Well, I, I, I guess, I don't know. If there was a mobile home that sat down ten, fifteen years ago, and hadn't sat down, hadn't sat down, but the last thing that sat there was a mobile home, and it's been vacant for, let's say fifteen, twenty years, could we go back and put a mobile home there?
Yes, they can replace it with a new one.
That's all right.
Cause, cause we do have plenty of those around the city, so.
Did you see him, Rick?
Okay.
I have a question about, uh, number two.
Mm-hmm.
Says asphalt or concrete, um, did we consider gravel?
We can consider gravel, the only thing about gravel, sometimes there's a lot of rain, you still get bogged down in it, but that's a consideration as well.
Concrete can be pretty expensive, I mean, we gotta estimate for our, it's, it's pretty expensive, so if someone buying their home and they get hit with that, I, I just don't wanna make it harder for people to afford asphalt, maybe, I'm not sure, cheaper, cheaper, uh, Mr. Willis, is it asphalt cheaper?
It's a little cheaper.
I'm sorry?
It, it's a little cheaper.
A little, not much, okay. Um, yeah, I, that's my biggest concern, it's just requiring that, I understand the purpose, but that can add a whole lot of more money that that person would have to pay a fee or require the asphalt or concrete or driveway.
Yeah, but also, um, when you look at some of the areas that we have now, it looks really bad, because really we have a code against parking on grass, so.
Yep, that's, yeah. Any other questions about the discussion of, uh, manufactured homes?
Yes, um, I think a lot of thought went into this, and I appreciate it, and if we're gonna increase and add stability to the City of Cordill, we're gonna have to do it with a non-depreciating asset, which manufactured homes are depreciating assets. Once you buy it, just like cars won't depreciate, so adding stability to the market, if we didn't do something on manufactured home problem, we're gonna continue to decrease the value of the city as a whole.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? I, I think sometimes people afford what they can afford, and I think to not consider each and all income levels, uh, or abilities, I should say, is a mistake. I understand property values and building up the City of Cordill, I argue for that probably just as much more than anybody here, but, um, I, I do believe the compromise is in what we try to do here, zoning and making sure they're not being extended. But I do believe we need to look at some areas that we could possibly dedicate to a section of it where we can still have people, the ability, if they can afford that manufacturing home, not to feel less, because they may not, can afford a, um, a more stable structural foundation or, you know, that type of thing. So I, I just think as representatives of the city, we have to be mindful of different people, ability to afford what they can afford and their aspiration, a home is a home to some people, um, you know. So I, I, I think we have to take all that into consideration, and I believe your idea for the most part, but, um, let's just be mindful of making sure we consider, um, everyone. Any further discussion?
Yes, I would like to say that, I looked at the prices of some mobile homes, um, and I feel that you can pay on a minimum twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars on a minimum, and at the max, hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a manufactured home. What is a fifteen, hundred, two thousand dollar driveway?
I think so, we don't know everybody's situation, and you can speak to that, that's your math, that's your money, but they not, may not be thinking the same. You and I may be able to afford that, but we can't speak for everybody, fifteen thousand dollars is a lot of money for some people, especially if they spending their wares on doing something. We, as representatives, have to look at all people and their affordability, not just, you know, our situation, um, and, and have a lens for our, our capacity. You know, our situation, um and, and we have a lens for our, our capacity. We, being a representative of people is entertaining the idea that they're less fortunate, or there's people that may not be able to. Do what we can do in our capacity, or the ones that sit at the top could do.
I most certainly understand what you're saying, Terry, but again, if we're outstanding money, uh it's something called budgeting, and that's what rich people up for, you know. And uh, and again, if you go, you know, we got, we got a code out there, says no parking on the grass, it looks terrible. On one hand, we talking about beautifying the city, and on the other hand, we talking about the cost, it's either we gonna do one, or we gonna do the other. So if you're gonna truly beautify the city, I mean, the parking on grass, when it rains, see all that mud over there, you got people that live in a home, that comes outside of their house. They have to take a different route to get to a car that's, have to walk thirty-five, forty feet to get to a car. That's only five feet from them because of the mud and the water that's in the yard. So, you know, a- again, uh and you've heard me say this a thousand times up here, not having this little excuse for not getting it. So we, you know, we, we have to, we have to put forth the effort to get what we want, nobody wants to be pacified, nobody wants to be pacified, people want to get out. And, and we all, the neighbors, I get it when a neighbor calls complaining about an issue in their neighborhood, and I get it because. They're paying taxes, they're, they're investing their money into their property, and they want not on their property to look good, but everything around them to look good, so. A- a- again, I'm, I'm in favor of the, the concrete and asphalt driveways, if you're gonna buy a mobile home, you know, let's, let's, let's make that happen, let's. Let's beautify the city and stop, you know, pacifying, that's, that's what I see it as, pacifying, that's what I see it as, you know.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Reeves believe if somebody can afford a home and they can afford an extra fifteen thousand dollars, they should know, alright, any further discussion? Alright, saying none, go ahead, say nothing.
Okay, uh and Mr. Chairman, there are a few items on here for approval, do you want to just wait until the end because I was going to ask for approval to move.
Yes, please, I didn't know.
For staff to move forward, okay, 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 the next item, uh residential and commercial solid waste collection and disposal services. Five proposals were received, and we need to schedule interviews, uh and the interviews will be held in executive session. And so I'm requesting uh, uh, uh your preference as to if you would like to schedule a separate meeting for the interviews, um. Or hold the interviews at the next uh scheduled meeting on September fifth. And we have five uh contractors who submitted.
What was the first option, I'm sorry?
Uh schedule a separate meeting for just the interviews or to incorporate the interviews at the next city commission meeting on September fifth.
Commissioners, can we think about that as you proceed and then come up with a decision?
Thank you. Terracotta phase one environmental study for the water plant and tower, uh Grant Buckley and I have discussed the possibility of. Obtaining an environmental study uh at no cost to the city for the water plant and tower on Ninth Avenue West. Uh the funds uh come, will come from a, a EPA grant, um and IDC received the funds, which is also part of um. River Valley uh covering some of the costs, um and so again, this would be an item, you know, for approval. And uh you all are familiar with the water plant and tower on Ninth Avenue. Uh the next item is uh discussion regarding the yes building at two twelve North Second Street. In twenty twenty-two, the commission voted uh on a one-year contract uh with EJB Family Youth Outreach Services for use of the facility, and so this. Uh item is just uh for direction on how you would like to proceed so that we can place the item on the September fifth agenda. Alright, as um previously mentioned, the official push-in ceremony will be held on Mon- Monday, August twenty-first at Fire Station One. Uh classification and compensation study, as previously mentioned, the meetings were held on August first with staff. To explain how the study would be conducted, and then we also uh distributed the questionnaires that uh David mentioned, and again, it's to. Make sure we capture what each employee, uh what their job responsibility is, so when. The interviews are scheduled with the employees and when Andrea and associates are uh comparing our salaries to other cities. That we have uh, you know, a true picture, so hopefully we can um make sure our salaries are competitive. Uh BZA board appointment, there's a board seat available on the border zoning appeals. An advertisement appeared, appeared in the cordial dispatch on August ninth, and the deadline to submit a letter of interest is Wednesday, August twenty-third. And that is for a vacancy on the uh BZA board. Sanitation rates, as previously discussed at a budget work session, residential san- sanitation fees will increase from. Nineteen ninety-five to twenty dollars and eighty-five cents, effective with the first billing cycle in September, which is the week of September eleventh. Um, interviews, uh again, I'm sorry, the marketing and social media manager and community advertisement manager. Positions are currently being advertised, um I will begin scheduling interviews next week. To date, we've received about twenty-three applications for marketing and social media manager and twenty-seven for the community advancement manager. Uh city offices will be closed Monday, September fourth in observance of Labor Day. And then um included in your packet is a flyer for the music festival on September ninth from ten AM to four PM. Uh one oh five East Ninth Avenue, which is the office uh for Main Street, and then um. One other announcement is that qualification for Ward one and Ward four begins on Monday, August twenty-first. And ends on Friday, August twenty-fifth, the hours are from eight thirty to four thirty PM at City Hall, the qualifying fee is two hundred and seventy dollars. And that's all that I have.
When is qualified?
August twenty-first, Monday, August twenty-first through Friday, August twenty-fifth, eight thirty AM to four P, four thirty PM.
And the fee is two seventy?
Two hundred and seventy dollars. And the advertisement was also in the August ninth publication of the cordial dispatch.
There you go.
That's all that I have.
So according, you need an approval for the RFP, right?
Uh for manufactured homes, if you all would like to move forward with those uh items, uh that will list for consideration, the RFP. Uh the phase one environmental study and the um, um. Discussion regarding how to proceed with uh the building at two twelve North Second Street, and then um.
Hold on for a moment, when you say how to proceed, you mean put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, okay, whether we want to put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Right.
Okay, perfect.
And then, of course, um, um, the sanitation rates were discussed at the budget work session at that time, there was agreement to move forward with that.
For approval, right? Are the rates already approved, or you asked for a commission to approve it?
To approve the rates, because you all approved moving forward with increasing sanitation rates, but just to approve the, the rate.
Alright, thank you, alright, so our city manager has asked for uh. Any commissioners, I'm saying this because you all will have to make the motions, uh for manufactured home, as it is, um. To septic, you also can make an amendment if needed to be, but right now, the first thing is approval of manufacturing homes, the layout. Uh the write-up that we have on the report, do we have a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
So we're probably moving second that we approve um the manufacturing home, um write up, alright? So um we shall proceed to discussion, any further discussion? Saying now, we shall proceed to vote, alright, Commissioner Rain, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Approved, alright, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, and next thing for approval is residential, commercial solid waste collection that's voted, RFP, do we have a motion for the RFP for that?
I'm having a motion that we have a workshop to here propose, but I think that's important to the public.
Okay, um. Do we have a second for commissioners, any motion for a workshop? So, no second, uh that's what I hear from the silence, alright, so now for lack of motion for a workshop, Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Well, I, I guess that kind of took care of, because I, I think she was asking for us to schedule the interviews.
Yes, and but my, uh what I'm looking for is if you all want to schedule a separate meeting for the interviews because we have five. Or if you want to make it part of the September fifth meeting.
Separate meetings, what do you, I think what you're trying to do, separate meeting?
So we would meet with five separately individually, which y'all are saying?
Yes, we, yes, it would be a separate meeting to meet with each five consultant individually, whether it's a separate meeting or a part of the September fifth meeting.
Any comments on this side, Commissioner Owens, Commissioner Shepherd, what do y'all do?
I think we got a separate meeting.
Separate meeting, separate meeting, and just for specifics, the separate meetings would be when?
Whatever date you all, let me know that you're available.
What date do you all wanna, or do you wanna get back on this, or do you want to throw a date?
I can send out some dates for you all to consider, yes.
You got a lot going on this, and I'll report that. Alright, um, alright, and next thing is five hundred and five, remember, say, you need approval for that as well, correct?
Yes.
Alright, you're working with the IDC and they were funded, so do we have a motion from this commission to approve the. Phase one environmental state of the water tower, Ninth Avenue?
Two seconds.
Been properly moved in second, we should go into discussion, any further discussion? Saying now, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Owens, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
It's approved, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, the next thing is, I believe whether or not to place the yes building, renew the contract back on the agenda for next meeting?
Yes, if you all want to place, renew, or however you all would like to proceed, because it was just a one-year contract.
So do we have a motion to place um the yes building in, in current occupied, uh occupied by EJB Family Youth Outreach on the agenda for next meeting? Do we have a motion for that?
So move, second.
Alright, we're probably move, move second, alright, um that we uh put it on the agenda, any discussion?
This will just be a discussion, this will not be for renewal, right?
Discussion, placing it on the agenda to consider the one-year, uh, uh, you know, consider use of the yes building.
Being that it was a one-year contract, can others, would others have time to come and um ask for the building as well?
That's up to the city commissioners, if you all would like for others to submit an interest, I mean, it would be on the agenda for discussion.
So you clarify, we're putting it, because I think actually it was up around June, July, is that correct?
It's really Aug- August, and let me back up, because it was approved to start June first, but if you all remember because of. Yes, public hearing and everything, um it really, they really occupied the building around August.
Okay, and so, what we're doing, we're putting it up for discussion, whether to renew it, it's our decision, but whether to renew it or.
Go in a different.
Commissioner Rain, you said, uh whatever we plan on use, and quick question, Miss Contral, Miss Contral, what, um. With that being on the community block, and maybe sitting around, you know, the answer to, that was so many years that we had to meet the requirements for seven L M I, right? Was that the end of twenty twenty-four, twenty-six, the agreement where we had utilized for that preference?
I have to check.
I think it's either twenty-four or twenty-six where that.
Yeah, we still have a few more years.
Yeah, it's up, okay, okay.
We'll get that, that date for y'all.
Alright, so do, um, we shall proceed to vote to include EJ, uh the yes building, EJB, EJB occupants. Uh on the agenda for next meeting, um alright, um we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
Alright, uh motion carries, put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, um, the next thing is, you need us to go ahead and approve the increase for um. The sanitation rate?
Yes.
Alright, do we have a motion to increase sanitation's rate from nineteen ninety-five to twenty eighty-five?
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved second that we increase sanitation's rate, alright, any discussion? Alright, saying now, we shall proceed to vote, all in favor, uh well, sorry, Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Approved, motion carries. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Alright, um city attorney, do you have anything?
Not for sure, thank you.
Okay, alright, seeing now, do we have personnel litigation or real estate reason to go into executive session?
Oh yes, you have personnel.
Alright, you have personnel reason, so commissioner, we need a motion to go into executive session, for personnel, for subsidy, I mean, for personnel, right, okay, request the city manager?
So move.
Second.
Alright, been properly moved second, that will be here into executive session at ten forty-nine AM, alright, all in favor, let it be known by the law. Alright, you shall move into executive session at this time.